Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the February 8th meeting of the Policy and Governance Committee. The time is now 5:02 PM, and we will begin our meeting. We'll start with item 1.2, which is Welcome and Opening Remarks. So, good evening, everyone. For those that may not know me, I am Rahila Ahmed, and I am the elected District 5 Representative on the Prince George's County Board of Education, as well as the Vice Chair for this committee. We can start the meeting with introductions from members of the committee, then members of board staff, and finally, members of administration. And so I will pass it over to one of my board colleagues, Mr. Saran Ruiz, to introduce himself, and we'll go from there.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Alvaro Saran Reeves, and I'm a student member of the Board of Education.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Judy McInnes Murray. I'm a opponent member at large for the education.
Thank you, colleagues. We can go forward with introductions from board staff. Starting with Mr. Cooper.
Ladies, go first, but my name is Brandon Cooper, interim Board Chief of Staff.
I'm Annie Spellis, Board Assistant.
My name is Mia Barton. I am the District Liaison for the Board Office.
Thank you, Board Staff. And finally, members of administration, feel free to introduce yourselves as well.
My name is Valerie Irvin. Hello, everyone. I'm the Board Liaison to the Administration.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am Robert Welsh, the Director of Compliance and Ethics.
And good afternoon, everyone. I'm Sally Robinson, Associate General Counsel in the Office of General Counsel.
Wonderful. Thank you for the members of administration that are here today. We can move forward to item 1.3, which is adoption of the February 8th meeting agenda. So colleagues, may please have a motion to approve this meeting agenda.
I'm moved.
I will second it. I will admit, though, I haven't really read it all the way through, but I will second it.
Thank you, Board colleagues. It's been moved and seconded to approve the meeting agenda. Seeing no discussion, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. We can move forward, colleagues, to item 1.4, which is approval of the committee meeting minutes, specifically the January 25th meeting minutes. So may please have a motion to approve the January 25th, 2022 meeting minutes.
Awesome.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. It's been moved and seconded to approve the January 25th, 2022 meeting minutes. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, and the meeting minutes are approved. Colleagues, we do not have any public comment speakers for item 2.1 and 2.2. I just want to take a moment to confirm that with staff. We have no public comment speakers for this evening, correct?
Go off mute and say it. I'm sorry.
That is correct. Okay. With that, colleagues, then we'll move forward to item 3.0, which is Policies to Review. The first policy that we have on our agenda is inclusive environments for LGBTQIA individuals. And as a reminder, at the last committee meeting, we voted on a motion to approve the draft policy to be forwarded to the full board at the February 24th board meeting as a first reader. And also in that motion, we said to include any amendments that come from this committee at today's meeting. And so board staff and administration took the feedback that we had at the last committee meeting and have developed an amendment that is amenable. And so I would ask Mr. Cooper and staff from administration to please review the committee requested amendment, and then we can decide to take a motion on that amendment or not.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As you mentioned, this policy was first brought back in October. I went off public comment during December, returned in January. At the last meeting, members of the committee approved policy for moving forward to first second reader, but they wanted an amendment regarding parental involvement. And so since the last meeting, I've been working with my colleagues, Ms. Irvin, Ms. Welsh, and Ms. Robinson, in the Office of General Counsel, to research, evaluate, and develop an amendment that met the feedback provided by the committee. This particular language came from a variety of sources, but it is also in best practices in looking at jurisdictions similar to ours, Montgomery County and Baltimore City. It had very similar language between those two policies. And so we looked at the same language, made a few adjustments that reflected the environment here in the school system, ran it through legal analysis with the Office of General Counsel. My understanding is Dr. Goldson has also reviewed and supported this as well. And so we offer it today. I'm hoping that it addresses the feedback that was provided last committee meeting, and in particular, allowing for Dr. Goldson, when she develops and updates administrative procedure, to provide further information about the implementation of parental involvement. But it kind of sets the general principle that parental involvement is essential and will be involved in the implementation of this process. And so with that, I'll yield to my administration colleagues if anything they want to provide that I may have missed before returning it back to the committee.
The only thing I would say is that Dr. Goldson was in favor of this language. She actually referenced back to when she was a principal and the importance of having parents involved in it, and that she really appreciated that we had included the language. I do also want to point out that she did provide a memo that does lay out some specific actions that the school systems, the schools actually have already done in relation to the AP, which is very similar to the policies, so that you can see what's been happening in the schools.
Thank you so much. And so before we open the floor, I will ask for a motion, but even before the motion, could either board staff or administration, please read out the amendment that is being proposed, so that the folks that are watching can understand exactly what amendment we are talking about? Thank you.
Yes. And so hopefully you can see my screen with the memorandum, correct?
Yes.
Okay. And so the language will be added as standard number nine. And it is, "In some cases, transgender and gender nonconforming students may not openly express their gender identity at home because of safety concerns or lack of acceptance. Matters of gender identity can be complex and may involve familial conflict. If this is the case, and support is required, the CEO would designate the appropriate office as necessary to support the student." And I want to note again, as we all know, board policy is one side of it, and administrative procedure is the other side. And so definitely, the details about how that will be implemented is at the discretion of the CEO. But we wanted thought incorporating the feedback from the committee, important to codify in the policy that parental involvement must be involved in the implementation of this policy. And that we feel like this language achieves that outcome.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, Mr. Cooper. Colleagues, with that, before we go into discussion, may I have a motion to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve this amendment for inclusion into the draft policy that will be presented to the full board on February 24th? Is there such a motion?
I'm moved.
Is there a second? I can second that.
Let me show it be on mute. I'm sorry. I see it talking.
Okay. Do I have to? Okay, you said you would second it, so that's fine, because I have a question.
Okay, wonderful. So it's been moved and seconded to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve this amendment for inclusion into the draft policy. We can open the floor now for discussion. Any discussion?
Okay. Yes. I'm sorry. I am really tired, guys. I just walked in the door, so just be patient with me a little bit. Did we hear from Board Member Williams on this policy? Anybody, Brandon, anyone? Since you, I mean, with your updates.
So, no, this memorandum was sent out to the committee last Thursday or Friday. I have not heard back as of today.
Okay. Okay. Thank you. That's my question. Thanks.
All right. Okay. If there's no other comments then or discussion, we can take a vote on the motion. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I need to abstain until I know that Board Member Williams has signed off on this.
Okay. So we have two ayes and one abstention. With that, the motion does not pass. So colleagues, at this point, what will happen is that the 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 policy will move forward as voted upon by the committee at the last meeting without the amendment. So it will be heard before the Board of Education as a first reader on February 24th without this amendment. Of course, it doesn't prohibit the amendment for coming forward on the floor at the time or in a future meeting of the committee or of the board later. So with that, we can move forward to item 3.2, which is the Draft Policy 0107 Ethics Regulations. We've had a lot of conversation around this policy, colleagues, but this is being brought to you not necessarily for a vote, but just to be able to provide an update. And so I will ask Mr. Cooper and any other members of administration that would like to chime in thereafter about any update that you have on this policy or new information that you would like for the committee to hear. Mr. Cooper?
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. As was meant to share with board members, committee members, the State Ethics Commission is issuing new model policies. We heard that from the Office of General Counsel. I asked my colleagues to speak on that in a second. And so in light of the fact that this policy takes a lot of work, definitely the most extensive time-consuming policies that I've been here and working on, and rightfully so, is very important policy. Staff, both board and administration felt that it would be a waste of the committee's resources, a waste of staff time to devote so much time into finalizing a policy that will be not the latest model, given that the commission has communicated to be issuing one soon. And so based on that, board administration staff have recommended to Board Member Ahmed that we hold revisions until we get that model policy. Because again, the State Ethics Commission is the final authority on this policy. And so waiting for their model policy will make this revision process much easier. So that was our recommendation to Board Ahmed and the committee. And I asked my administration colleagues, who were the ones who actually communicated with the commission, to chime in on this as well.
Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Yes. So Mr. Cooper is correct. I did have a conversation with the State Ethics Commission's General Counsel last week. And he indicated to me that the State Ethics Commission will be adopting and publicizing modifications to their templates any day now. He actually thought that they would have been published on Comar last month, but it's taking a little bit longer than they had anticipated. So I'm basically checking their website every day to see when it will be published. And then we can go forward by adding any additional language that would be required in our policy, so that it tracks the new template.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cooper, and thank you, Ms. Robinson. I will not be calling for a vote unless there's a will of the body to call for a vote, but I will open the floor for any discussion or questions from members of the committee at this time.
I thank the staff for bringing us that information forward, and I'm okay with it. Thanks.
All right. If there's no other discussion, we can move forward, colleagues, to item 3.3. This is the draft policy on officers, and this is also being brought to us for an update. So, Mr. Cooper and administration, if you would like to provide us with an update on this policy, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. This is actually a nice segue into the legislative update, because the reason that we're bringing this policy back, we originally had discussed it at the January meeting, and we had taken feedback from the committee regarding consolidating the various officer policies we have into one policy for the Chair, Vice Chair, Secretary, Treasurer, Executive Officer. However, in light of what's going on in the legislative updates, we'll share shortly, the Prince George's County Task Force on the Board of Education, appointed by Ms. Angela Alsworth Brooks, they're recommending adding language in the state statute regarding the role of the chair and also changing the officer title from executive officer to superintendent. And so given that the state law will be changing, which is obviously supreme over board policy, we wanted to wait until the state law solidifies whether the recommendation from County Executive Alsworth Brooks Task Forces is taken up by the General Assembly, and they make changes to the roles of chair and codify it into statute. We thought it would be best to wait until that's done, and then follow that. We can revise the policy accordingly, based on what the General Assembly provides for us. And so that was the reason for holding, and I'm sure unless there are updates, I'll give more updates on that. That was our recommendation to the committee. I don't believe administration had any additional comments, but they agree best to wait until the General Assembly provides the course.
Okay. Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Cooper. Are there any questions or comments from members of the committee? Okay. If not, we can move forward to item 4.0, which is the Legislative Update. Item 4.1 specifically is the MAVE Legislative Committee update. And so I will yield the floor to Ms. McInnes Murray. Excuse me, Ms. McInnes Murray. It's been a long day to be able to provide some highlights on the Legislative Committee briefing that was held, I believe, yesterday. So Ms. McInnes Murray, the floor is yours.
Yes, ma'am, and I thank you. And Ms. Irvin, and I will be sharing this task. I will go first, and then I will give it to Ms. Irvin, if she doesn't mind. The two bills that I want to bring to you today is House Bill 352. Oh, wait a minute. I'm sorry. It's been a long day. Sorry, Ms. Irvin. That's your bill. I'm moving on. House Bill 355. And I think, colleagues, you received the copy of it, the purpose of establishing the work group on the membership and operation of the Prince George's County Board of Education, and generally relating to the work group on the membership and operation of the Prince George's County Board of Education. And I was thinking, Madam Chair, that we probably need to take this to the full board to decide whether or not they want to take a position.
Sure. Could you remind me which policy, which?
Okay, it's House Bill 355. And I had Mr. Cooper send you the entire bill. I thought that would be simpler. Mr. Cooper, you did attack. I told you I was late. I don't see it on dots.
Okay, so I'm not seeing it, House Bill 355, on the highlights from the MAVE Legislative Committee document, perhaps?
No, it's not there, Mr. Cooper.
It would be on the General Assembly Updates under that agenda item?
The reason it's not there, excuse me for interjecting, is that Ms. McInnes Murray is reporting on two local bills that are Prince George's County only. And so MAVE did not take a position on those two bills because they're local bills.
Okay, so I'm learning. So maybe I took it out of order. It's been a really long day. But, Mr. Cooper, we did provide copies of these bills, correct, to the to
The committee, exactly. And it's posted on Board Docs.
If you don't mind taking it out of order, Madam Chair, please. Because there is another bill, 354, that's also a part of what I believe we should take it to the full board to take a position on. And that bill is non-use of public school facilities. And that's for the purpose of authorizing in Prince George's County the non-school use of public school facilities for public and community purposes and the manner by which certain costs are appropriated to be regulated by local law consistent with certain use criteria and not inconsistent with other provisions of the law. Authorizing a local law to provide for an inter-agency coordinating board, requiring the members of an inter-agency coordinating board to be appointed by the Prince George's County Executive and confirmed by the Prince George's County Council in accordance with a local law, and generally relating to the non-school use of public facilities in Prince George's County. And as a backdrop, and Ms. Irvin, you can jump in. My understanding is the way it is done now is the Board of Education makes the decision, and they want to, I guess, mirror what they're doing in Montgomery County, where the county group makes the decision. Is that correct, or Ms. Irvin?
Yes, Board Member McInnes Murray, you're absolutely correct on that. What this bill would essentially do is create an inter-agency commission, which would be made up of the CEO and her designees, Park and Planning, and their designees, the county executive and her designees, and it would create an overarching quasi-governmental agency that would be responsible for assigning public buildings for community use. So instead of what we do right now, which is if you want to, as you all know better than I, if you want to use a school building for a private purpose or for a ball field or whatever it might be, right now, you go through the school system, and they would, they assign that. What the county executive is trying to do is centralize all of that under one agency.
Wonderful. So Ms. McInnes Murray, thank you for the update on House Bill 354 and House Bill 355. Typically, when we are moving a bill forward to the full board, it is with the recommendation of supporting the the bill, opposing the bill, taking no position on the bill, supporting with amendments, that kind of a thing. And so there can be one or two things that maybe occur at this juncture. One is that if a colleague feels so moved to take, feels so inclined to make a motion in any type of way for any of these bills, then we can, you know, that can be considered if it's seconded in committee now, and we can discuss that. The other option is, we could put this on the agenda for the next committee meeting with the intention of, hey, everyone, take a look at these bills. We want to vote to take a position on it. So we could do one or work, either do one or the other of those two items now. That would be my suggestion of how to try and move forward, given the report, the update that you gave, as well as your feedback. So, go ahead.
Go ahead. I'm just trying to be clear. So your suggestion is that we in this committee take a position and recommend it to the board, or take it to the full board?
That is how it works in this committee. That's how, at least this is how it's worked in the committee since I've been on the board, that the committee takes a position, recommends that, takes, recommends the board take a particular position on a bill. There have been some instances in which the entire legislative agenda with suggestions of positions to take, whether it's support or opposition, has come before the full board, but that has been during like a work session of the body, specific to legislative updates, to my recollection. So that would be my consideration or my recommendation. But at any point, if a member of this committee could make a vote or a motion, if you just want to move it forward for the full board without any recommendation from the committee, that's also possible. I just
Oh, yeah, let's do that. And the only reason I'm saying that is because maybe we, I mean, I don't know how fast it's moving through committee, Ms. Irvin, but you know that. And I guess I'm wondering, do we need to take a position now? Or can it wait for our next meeting?
I think for the two local bills that you just reported on, I think we have time. Because our delegation has not moved on any, either of those two bills yet. So we may have time to have you and your colleagues decide how you want to move forward at the next meeting.
Okay, so Vice Chair Ahmed, can we hold off on these then until at least Vice Chair Williams joins this body?
Sure. So what we can do is, and I'll ask if staff can put this in the follow-up item, to make sure the House Bill 354 and House Bill 355 are brought back to committee at the next committee meeting for consideration of a position or a vote by the body at that time.
Okay, I appreciate that. And I promise to learn the process a little better before then. Now, Ms. Irvin, you are on. Thank you.
Thank you. It was my pleasure to join Board Member McInnes Murray. I think it was yesterday, it feels like a week ago already, that MAVE had a legislative briefing. So there's a lot of bills between the last time this committee met and today. As a matter of fact, Friday is the day that's the cutoff for Senate bill introductions. And so we're expecting another 100 or so bills will come through between now and the end of the week. So we're really scurrying to try to capture the bills that are of utmost importance to this committee in particular. And so what I want to do is go over some highlights from the MAVE Legislative Briefing, because I think they're important for this committee. And as you just laid out, Vice Chairman Ahmed, that this, some of these could be going to full board. I'm not sure what the, what the feeling of this body is going to be, but let me just go through the ones that I have here very quickly. The first bill that the Legislative Committee discussed was House Bill 352. And this is an interesting bill, because it is a bill sponsored by Delegate Chi. She's from Montgomery County. And the title is American Studies and Social Equity Standards Advisory Board. So what she was trying to do was create an advisory board that would look at academic standards on how American studies or history is being taught. MAVE opposes this bill because it's a curriculum content standards mandate, and there is a potential overlap with the blueprint implementation. And from what, and the comments from McInnes Murray, other 23 colleagues around the state was that people thought that this was a bill that if it were to move through this process, that it would be a problem, because it's creating mandates where a lot of people are really open to this whole concept of how we teach US history. And so it's, it could be politically fraught. So MAVE, the people that were at the meeting yesterday voted to oppose. Moving on to Senate Bill 362, Primary and Secondary Education Virtual Schools. This took up the majority of the time we spent together yesterday. It essentially talks about, I just lost my screen. Oh, here we go. It essentially is a bill that would alter the requirements for virtual schools. Most people don't know that there are lots of virtual schools, actual schools, where the students enrolled in the schools get the majority of their education through means other than having a teacher in front of the classroom. So what this bill is trying to do is, is to change or make revisions to the current policy right now. MSD has regulations that sort of put forward how how these schools operate in real time. And so there was a lot of back and forth on this bill in particular, because a lot of the rural counties, especially on the eastern shore, have devised a group of counties that are very concerned that they want to have options in the event that anything like we just went through for the past two years happens again. They want to be able to have options for how their school systems are able to operate virtually. And apparently, this bill does not allow that to happen. So to make a very long story short, what ended up occurring yesterday was that the school board members present voted to send this back, this bill back to its sponsor, to the bill sponsor. And they voted that if the sponsor were to include their amendments, then they would support it. And if the sponsor did not include MAVE's amendment, then they would not. So let's see. For some reason, I have lost my screen, so I'm going to have to go to my notes. I'm sorry. I don't know how that happened, but it happened. One second. It's crazy to have, and I know, Brandon, you
Yeah.
were so much better at this than I am. But here we go.
Want me to share the screen?
I have it right now. It's up there. So we're going to move to
House Bill 146.
Well, let me, I missed one really important line here, and that is that these regulations already exist at MSD. So school districts are just concerned about losing flexibility. So we're moving on to House Bill 146, which is Education Reportable Offenses and Student Discipline. This is sponsored by Chairman of Ways and Means, Vanessa Attaberry, and Delegate Moon from Montgomery County. This, they tried to pass this bill in the House last year. It failed, and MAVE is opposing it again, and it's based on support And Mabe is opposing it again, and it's based on Support for Notice of Arrests and Appropriate Education and Behavioral Health Services Responses. So this bill would essentially uh alter the definition of reportable offenses um for for students. So that's opposed. Um and then Support with uh Amendments. I brought this to the committee two weeks ago. Uh and this was uh voted out of 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 Mabe's uh Legislative uh Briefing with Support with Amendments. A Mabe supports the uh overall bill, but they want to make sure that the mandatory designation of non-medical school staff as emergency medical responders be, is is changed to discretionary. Mabe never supports any bills or legislation that create mandates on school systems. Um the next page that you all have in your packet is a briefing highlight on SROs, so we can skip past that. And here are some bills that are being supported. Um House Bill seven forty-three is Teacher Retirement and Pension Systems reemployment. And this bill would allow school systems to rehire retired educators uh beginning July twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four because of the shortage of teachers in classrooms. So Mabe does support that bill. Uh Senate Bill sixteen, House Bill five forty-seven, Equivalent Access Standards, Digital Tools. Um the amendments were not discussed uh around this bill. I think they're going to come to us with amendments. But this bill would require each local board to provide a student with disabilities access to specified digital tools. Uh and so uh general, there's general support. Uh they'll get back to us with amendments, which we don't have in front of us right now. On House Bill seven fifty, Senate Bill four twenty-two, uh this bill sponsored by Senator Rosa Pepp uh actually creates a mandate for school systems, including at least one new net zero school uh in each school system. No, this is the CTE. This is a mandate that would require a statewide CTE pathway for high school students to prepare for a career that requires driving schools, skills and a driver's license, including drivers of buses, trucks, passenger cars and heavy equipment. Um Mabe uh is going to support this with amendments to get around probably what is written in the bill that creates a mandate for CTE programs across the state. Uh Senate Bill five twenty-eight, sponsored by Senator Pinsky, uh is a Climate Solutions Now Act of twenty twenty-two. This bill also um creates a mandate for school systems, including at least one new net zero school in each system by twenty thirty-three unless waived. It creates a mandate for purchases of new electric school buses unless waived. And it would redefine high-performance buildings and with exceptions for schools in rural areas. And so the next set of bills are all bills that are being opposed. House Bill three fourteen, County Boards of Education Voting Member Requirements, which would, which would, beginning January one, twenty twenty-five, that a county board have an odd number of members. If a county board has an odd number of members, what this bill would do would authorize a a board to select a certain individual to um break a tie, essentially. Of course, Mabe is opposing that one. Um they're opposing House Bill seven ninety-seven, County Boards of Education Student Membership Alterations, sponsored by Delegate Lutkey. And this bill would require each member of a county board to have certain voting rights and add a student member to certain county boards. This bill would include provisions changing the voting status of most student board members and mandates that all boards have a student member, and Mabe is in opposition of that bill. Uh, uh House Bill six eighteen, Maryland Parental Rights. That bill is also being opposed. Uh this bill would require that each county board, in consultation with parents, teachers and administrators, establish and adopt the policy to promote parental involvement in the public school system. And then it goes through a a series of of uh, I would say mandates on how parents would be um operating with their children uh in vis-a-vis the school system. And there was conversation on that, and it was, it's going to be opposed by Mabe as an organization. And the final bill that was discussed was House Bill four fifteen, Funding Scholarships for Non-Public Schools. This is a bill to expand vouchers. And of course, that was opposed, well-heartedly. Uh and then quickly, I don't, I'm not going to go through these, but you see there's a list of curriculum mandates pending. All of the bills you see bulleted, House Bill one sixty-five, one ninety-four, two hundred, et cetera. All of those bills are curriculum mandates. So there are bills here that we we've seen, and we know that there are more coming where um state lawmakers are making a pitch to mandate what gets taught inside public schools. And that is the end of the highlights from um Mabe's meeting yesterday. Uh and I think it speaks to what's coming forward um uh from the Senate and the House as we move uh to the end of this week, where we're, we're expecting dozens and dozens of more bills to drop, um many of them being around educate, public education.
Thank you um, uh Ms. Irving. Now, Vice Chair Ahmed, I need advice from this committee. Because in that meeting yesterday with May, I was really um I I never want to take a position for Prince George's County without bringing it to this full board. I mean, to the full board, but I didn't understand the process that we use internal to Prince George's County. So if 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 what you said before is the process, if I see bills, I bring them to this committee, then this committee takes the position, and then we take it to the full board. I'm not sure that we'll get through everything between now and uh April. But if that's the process, I'll follow that process, because we're meeting every two weeks now.
Yes, so I think that would be the ideal situation. I would say if there are colleagues that feel that there are specific bills, of course, we don't need to take a position on every single bill, but
Right, I agree.
Specific bills that colleagues feel strongly, hey, we should probably take a position on this bill. Um let me know, let Mr. Cooper know, let administration know so they can be prepared to be able to provide the committee with all of the information needed to make that decision. And then maybe um for on the staff side, if we could just make it very clear in the administrative content of board docs, um when it comes to the legislative updates, which which bills are bills that committee members would like to discuss and take positions on, so we can move it forward.
Okay, well, I appreciate the uh work that um Ms. uh Irving did with me because she provided me the list of all of the bills, and we went through them yesterday. And she highlighted, we sort of worked together to highlight those that we thought uh Prince George's County would like, may want to take the position on. So I'll get that organized. I may call you uh and you and I will talk off the line so that I can make sure that I am following um the agreed-upon process.
Thank you, Ms. Mickens Murray. I see Ms. Irving's hand. Ms. Irving?
Thank you very much, um uh Board Member Ahmed. I wanted to follow up with what Board Member Mickens Murray just said. Sometimes in the Mabe legislative meetings, uh uh and Judy, uh Board Member Mickensbury was really, really was uh on her toes yesterday, because what happens is because we're not meeting every week like we used to meet. Uh Mabe used to meet every Monday. Now it's meeting every other Monday. So between the 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 weeks, what they do is they bring these bills forward and and uh the people at the table don't necessarily know the positions that they're going to be asked to take on the spot. So I think uh Board Member Mickens Murray was asked to make on-the-spot decisions without having uh her colleagues, um, you know, the ability to talk to her colleagues. And I think, I just wanted to reiterate that that's what's happened. Uh and so uh Board Member Mickens Murray and I are just going to have to be on a lot more calls than we've been on because things are happening differently than they did last two terms. And so we have to capture the best we can uh before these uh bills start moving through the process. And so far, we're in good shape because uh the bills are just now going to first reading. Uh in the last two weeks, those were bills that were already uh being, they were being heard sponsor-only, meaning bills that were heard last session. So we're just now getting moving, and I think uh Board Member Mickens Murray has been doing an outstanding job on behalf of of uh Prince George's um Board of Education. So I just wanted to kind of reiterate what she was saying to put a fine point on it.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you for that. Thanks, Ms. Irving. Um colleagues, at this point in time, uh we've gone through item four point one and four point two, and so if there are any comments from members of the committee, please feel free to raise your hand so you can be recognized. Comments or discussion points? Okay, seeing no other comments or discussion points um for item four point one or four point two, we can move forward to item five point O. That is follow-up and next steps. Um and specifically, item five point one, you'll see the draft policy for Indigenous Peoples' Land Acknowledgement. There was a request from a committee member to provide a purpose cover sheet for the policy, and so that is uploaded to board docs now. Um additional um uh information, follow-up from previous meetings are going to be posted to board docs upon receipt uh under item five point two. And then in terms of next steps, item five point three, I just wanted to announce that the next Policy and Governance Committee meeting will be held on February twenty-second, twenty twenty-two at five PM. And please check the board page on the PGCPS website for more information. Colleagues, with that, uh we can, unless there's any com- I see Ms. Mickens Murray's question on item five point O. Ms. Mickens Murray?
Oh, it's not for five point, that's next steps. No, it's not for five point O. Uh so I'll let you finish, but I have a question.
Okay, no, I'm done with item five point O. Is this in relation to an item previous, like a previous?
Yes, because I see uh Board Member Williams is here. So I didn't know if we would be able to go back and maybe revisit the vote that we took regarding the amendment for the LGBT. So we, I know, I know we did, but now that she's here, if if the maker of the vote could, whatever that process is, to allow us to accept the amendment, because I I just needed her input on it.
Okay, so I mean, we have to then reopen the conversation on that entire item, because I don't know that we should go back to an item without members of the committee having the full context of it. Um let me pause for a second, see, Ms. Irving, I see your hand up, it may be relevant to this point. Ms. Irving?
Thank you very much. I didn't want the meeting to end without a fa- some follow-ups that we were very specifically asked the staff to present at this meeting. And one of the follow-ups, I think, was uh asked by uh Board Member Mickens Murray regarding um how the administration sends out draft policies. Uh that was a very specific question asked as a follow-up, and I wanted to make sure that I followed up on that. So is this an okay time to do that?
Yes, you can go forward, Ms. Irving.
Okay, so um Ms. Mickens Murray asked um if the administration sends all draft policies to parent, student, staff, pub, and the public during public comment period, and the answer, Ms. Mickens Murray, is yes. I just needed to make sure that I verified that with um Michael Dickerson. And we do send, the board has its website where those things are posted. PGCPS has a website where it's posted, but the Engage Newsletter also um has a section for public comment. It's a, it's in a form. So students, staff, parents in the community, when they get the Engage Newsletter, after we have a session where there's, where we're asking for public comment, that will go in that newsletter. So I wanted to make sure that I was able to follow up uh with you. And there were, there were a couple of other follow-ups, but it really was specifically on the LGBTQIA policy. So I didn't want to want the meeting to end without responding.
And I appreciate that, because, and that's why I wanted to go back and revisit it now that Ms. Williams was here. Because we asked a lot of questions around that policy, and it seems like you guys did a lot of work around that policy. And I don't want your work to to be for naught. I mean.
Sure, so Ms. Mickens Murray, I I hear what you're saying. Let's uh, let's complete the follow-up and next steps item, and then I have an idea of how to go back to the the other.
Appreciate it. Thank you so much.
Ms. Welsh?
And in line with what uh Ms. Irving uh said in terms of follow-up, one of the follow-ups I was requested to do was to research all the policies and find out if any of the policies also address groups of people. And we do not have any policy that does address groups of people. But I did want to point out, we do have a policy, Policy two five one three, that talks about special days uh or observances. And the whole purpose of that policy is really just to make sure that on the special days that are pretty much uh legislated in the law, that we are doing curricular activities, that we might be putting on performances or uh putting out notices, you know, anything to make people aware of the special days.
Wonderful. Thank you, Ms. Welsh. Okay, so uh back to Ms. Mickens Murray's point. Uh Ms. Mickens Murray, I think maybe what we can do is a motion to reconsider the vote on the amendment. So is, do I hear a motion to reconsider uh the vote on the amendment for the LGBTQIA policy? Is there such a motion?
Does anyone can make it, or does um Alvaro have to make it because he made the motion?
I don't.
And I, and I would make it. I make a motion to reconsider the motion on the hill, on the amend, on accepting the amendment.
Okay, I will second that. So it's been moved and seconded to move to reconsider the amendment. Um if it is, if if it's accepted, then we can reconsider the amendment. Um is there any discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All those in favor of the motion to reconsider the amendment, please signify by saying aye.
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 Okay, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes and we can reconsider the amendment. So the amendment that is up for reconsideration um is uh the one that was presented by staff earlier this this evening, uh specific to parental involvement. I will ask staff one more time if you can uh either share your screen or vocally express what it is, uh what the amendment is that is going to be reconsidered by the committee.
Okay, one moment, just pulling up my screen. I may not be as eloquent as I was earlier. Um one moment. So, as I mentioned before, this policy originally came for the committee in October, um when a public comment in December came back to the committee in January. At the last meeting, uh the board voted to approve the draft policy and before so full board as the first reader at the February twenty-fourth, twenty-second, twenty twenty-two board meeting um to include any amendments that come from the next board meeting, uh which is today. And so in coordination with my colleagues' administration, we researched extensively um best practices in the area and also internal resources listed in my memo. Um we noticed that uh pretty much the same language regarding parental involvement is already in place and in use in Montgomery and Baltimore City jurisdiction. And so after speaking with their uh staff and understanding the source of this language and the and utility of it, um in discussions with administration staff, we tweaked the language, um taking what Baltimore City and Montgomery County have used and used successfully, made modifications based on realities here on the ground. There's memorandums to that effect also on board docs um and submitted to Dr. Goldson for review and approval. And it's before the committee now, with the recommendation from board staff and administration staff for it being incorporated in the policy. Um as I mentioned earlier before, uh board policy, as you know, is a partner with administrative procedure. And so this board policy sets the broad uh goal that parental involvement is a requirement in implementation of this policy. And it leaves the details of that uh to chief executive officer who runs day-to-day. And so I'll leave it there from my perspective, allow my colleagues to add in from administration. Ms. Welsh?
Just, just to add, which I had said previously, that um Dr. Goldson was in favor of this addition to have the parent involvement uh statement there.
All right, thank you, Ms. Welsh, and thank you, Mr. Cooper. Uh colleagues, at this time, I'm going to ask if there is a motion to recommend that the Policy and Governance Committee approve this amendment for inclusion into the draft policy that will be presented to the full board on February twenty-fourth. Is there, it's been moved, is there a second?
Second.
It's moved and seconded that the Policy and Governance Committee approve this amendment for inclusion into the draft policy that will be presented to the full board on February twenty-fourth. I see um we can open the floor up for discussion, and I see Ms. Williams's hand. Ms. Williams?
I just wanted to say thank you for um revisiting this, this item, and my apologies for being late.
Wonderful. Are there any other comments from members of the committee? I see Ms. Mickens Murray.
Oh, I want to thank everybody involved for listening to us, hearing us and providing the feedback. And forgive my um And forgive my um slowness this afternoon, but it's been a very long day. It's not my heart, it's my head. So thank you all for all that you've done. Appreciate it.
Wonderful. Any other comments? Hearing and seeing none, um, there's been a motion, and it's been seconded. Uh, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 He, any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes unanimously, and uh uh the amendment is approved. Uh, at this point in time, staff, I would ask that uh this amendment be incorporated into the draft policy that is being brought forward to for presentation and discussion by the full board on February twenty-fourth. So please make sure that that, that this amendment is included and that change is made before it goes uh before the full body. Uh, thank you so much. Uh, colleagues, we'll revert back to our agenda, uh, and we are at item six point oh. So if you may, uh, you can stop sharing your screen, although I love to see the amendment all day. It's all good. Um, uh, we're at item six point oh now, colleagues. We're at closing remarks and adjournment. And so I want to thank everybody for a wonderful meeting. Um, we uh covered a lot within this last hour, and I appreciate the work and support um of my colleagues, the work and support of board staff, and the work and support of administration to bring everything forward in the way that you all have. Um, I know this is not easy work, and I really appreciate all of the effort and input that everyone has has pulled together to to make this work. And so uh with that, I I want to thank everyone uh again for attending this meeting, and I will ask for a motion to adjourn. Is there such a motion?
So moved?
I moved.
Seconded to adjourn the meeting. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes, and we are adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Good night. I swear, these pages.